Hello, it was four thirty P M on Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. At four thirty, we'll begin the city council meeting of the city of New Ulm. There are no items on the consent agenda for today, so we will move on to item number one point one for licenses and permits. Bingo pull tabs, tip boards, raffle gambling permit for Church of Saint Mary.
I'll offer motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number one point two, a tree service license for Brown Tree Service LLC.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number one point three, liquor permits for the Herman Monument Society.
Motion to approve the issuance of a liquor permit for the Herman Monument Society to serve alcohol during Herman Fest located at Harmon Park, one-on-one North Garden Street and Herman Park, fourteen Monument Street on Saturday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty one, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number one point four, liquor permit for athletic events held at the New Ulm Civic Center.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a liquor permit for the athletic events held at the New Ulm Civic Center for K six Sports LLC, the New Ulm Steel Junior Hockey Team for events at the New Ulm Civic Center, twelve twelve North Franklin Street for the period beginning September first, two thousand and twenty one, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty two, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two point one, reports from councilors. Les?
I have nothing this time.
Couple minor things. Heritage Preservation did an approval last night for a re-ruff. They hadn't met since, I believe, May of this year. Park and Rec Department, we do have one item on the agenda. I think most of you are aware that they did take the commission out to look at all of our city parks. It was kind of interesting that a lot of people didn't know where the city owns all of our property for city parks. And C V B is tomorrow at ten o'clock. I'll be attending that. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Christian.
I have nothing new to report.
I have nothing.
I have nothing to report. Thank you for your updates. Item number three point one, to establish no parking areas along Sixteenth North and Seventeenth North Streets.
Thank you, Madam President, City Councilors. Safety Commission at their meeting, let's see, what date was that? I apologize. At their last meeting, took on the issue of establishing no parking areas along Sixteenth North and Seventeenth North Streets prior to the opening of the new QuickTrip in that vicinity. There was concerns from Mr. Esser at Liquor Mart of semi-truck turning movements and the tight corridors that would create as vehicles are approaching Broadway at both Sixteenth North and Seventeenth North Street. We had conversations with the owner of Plaza Garibaldi and also with Windshuttle Insurance about this as well to note any concerns they had. Plaza's, Garibaldi's concerns were pretty much mitigated. They would go along with whatever ultimately got chosen, as they have recently expanded their rear parking lot at their restaurant. Mr. Windshuttle at Windshuttle Insurance was concerned about losing some on-street parking for his clients, many of whom have mobility issues and things of that nature. So it was decided to keep a couple stalls free, kind of just to the west of his facility, as you can see on the attached document. City staff, with our drone, we flew the site back in July, on July twenty-third, to kind of depict the site layout and the no parking requests. So Safety Commission ultimately recommended those no parking areas, along with signing Seventeenth North for no trucks prior to State Street, and then also providing signage at the exits for QuickTrip to prohibit trucks from churning into the residential areas to head west on both Sixteenth and Seventeenth North Street. That was at the recommendation of a resident who lives in the vicinity. Safety Commission's recommendation was unanimous, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
So the Seventeenth is both sides of the street.
Correct. If you look on the page.
Did Safety Committee talk about just doing one side, the QuickTrip side?
They, not really. They just went with the recommendation after looking at the truck turning movements diagram that's page four of the attached. Kind of shows the room needed for the trucks to complete that turn into that westernmost approach.
Because for that business, that's the primary spot that people park. I mean, that's a lot of customer parking there. Where do you intend that parking to move to?
They recently expanded their parking lot in the back, in the rear.
They did?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. All right.
And again, Joe, they were okay with it?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, they're fine with whatever decision was made, so they didn't have a preference one way or the other.
And no troubles with the other, the South QuickTrip with the truck approaches or anything?
On the, this is for the new facility.
Right, but they've been good corporate citizens, as evidenced by the South not having trouble.
As far as I'm aware, we don't have any issues, yep.
Madam President, George, just have one question on the photo where you indicated the no-left turn and the no-right turn.
Yep.
Is that going to impact trucks that would be banking deliveries to the facility to the west, the storage place?
The truck turning movement shouldn't, the no-truck signage would begin prior to Washington Street, so they should be able to still make the deliveries to the old Runnings Facility.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if they were getting fuel or something and then wanting to go there, where that could be a problem.
It may be, but I think in that instance, if they're going straight to the Runnings Facility, I think we can make that accommodation.
It's mainly just to make sure they don't get into the residuals deep and get lost, yeah.
Other drivers.
Yep.
You said the Windshuttle business will have a couple of parking spots open.
Left a couple, as you can see on the overhead photo there, there was two cars parked. That was the intent.
So they'll have two spots.
Yeah, plus they have their driveway access and then.
They have a driveway, all right. I'm going to offer a resolution, waive the reading to establish no parking areas along Sixteenth North and Seventeenth North Streets with signage and curb painting to install no-truck signage along Seventeenth North Street at State Street and truck turning movement restriction signage at the QuickTrip site exits.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number four point one, Joint Airport Zoning Board Appointment.
Madam President, I think you skipped over four. One was summary of closed session.
No, that's deleted.
Oh, that's deleted, okay. I should have printed my, printed my agenda last week. Madam President, City Councilors, this is the next step in rezoning up at the airport. We have two Airport Commission members who are willing to serve on the JASB, the Joint Airport Zoning Board. It's a process that's regulated by Minnesota State Statute and New Ulm City Code. We have sent an invitation to Brown County for them to appoint two members as well. And then the four appointed members then appoint or elect a chair to serve as the five-member JASB. The city council passed a resolution on September nineteenth of two thousand and seventeen to establish the Joint Airport Zoning Board, and we're finally far enough within this process to appoint the members and take care of the zoning, rezoning up at the airport. The current zoning ordinance has been in place since nineteen eighty-three, so it's well due for an update. The steps for rezoning are initiating seminal documents and establishing the zoning board, which we are at right now. And then we'll go through draft ordinance with the JASB members and multiple public hearings and opportunities for public inputs and state review. So it's just kind of the next domino to fall in this process.
Thank you.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to appoint Airport Commission members Wayne Clausen and Rosemary Gier to serve as City of New Ulm representatives on the Joint Airport Zoning Board.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number four point two, subordinate loan made to Black Frost Distilling LLC.
Council President and Councilors, before you have a simple request to subordinate our loan position to the SBA. The SBA and five oh four will pay down, will be issuing debentures to pay down Citizens Bank bank note, and they need a guarantee that they will be in second position. That's currently where we sit, so they're asking us to subordinate, so we would move down to third position. The city gets this request all the time for our loans, and we always have subordinated in the past.
Madam President, I don't know if anyone has any questions. For me, we've been in discussions with the attorney for the lenders on this. I think this was anticipated when the project was presented to the council, that they're kind of moving into their permanent financing. We knew there would be some SBA, five oh four corporation involvement. It does put us into, from a second into a third position, but I think we kind of knew that was going to happen. I believe our loan is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars secured by a mortgage. So that's just where it's at. We're still kind of working out the final terms and the subordination, but the key thing for you would be if you'd be willing to move from that second to a third to allow them to do this part of their financing.
Do we have a timeframe on this, where this will happen, two thousand and twenty-two?
They're looking to close potentially the end of this month on their construction loan with Citizens, but that's still kind of up in the air, but they are going to start working sometime in the next, in the next year.
Okay, so it'll close sometime in two thousand and twenty-two.
Or it'll close sometime this year.
No, but they're going to, their project will be complete in two thousand and twenty-two.
Potentially. I don't know what their timeline is, no.
Let's let them get a start here. I'll make a motion to approve the request of Citizens Bank on behalf of Black Frost Distilling LLC to subordinate a loan made by the city of New Ulm to allow the issuing of debentures on the property at two oh one, First North Street.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five point one, appointment of Terry Sweeney, to Mayor Terry Sweeney, to the Police Commission.
I'll approve the appointment of Mayor Terry Sweeney to Police Commission to fill the unexpired term of Mayor, former Mayor Boisman.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five point two, set public hearing on two thousand and twenty-two MSAS Improvement Project.
Madam President, City Councilors, this is the next step in the two thousand and twenty-two MSAS Improvement Project, which is twentieth North Street from North Broadway to Front Street and Front Street from nineteenth North to twentieth North Street. This project is proposed to replace the bituminous maintenance mat and improve the roadway section of curb and gutter sidewalks, recreational trail extension, street lighting, boulevard restoration, concrete pavement. Our consultant engineer's been working on this project, and we're getting close to having final plans and specifications, being able to be sent to the state for review. It's just the next step in the process for this project, to have the public hearing prior to ordering in this improvement project.
Motion to set the date of the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-two MSAS Improvement Project for Tuesday, September twenty-one, two thousand, September twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, at four thirty P M on the following, as stated, item number one.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five point three, request for proposals for twentieth South Street Utility and Roadway Reconstruction.
Madam President, City Councilors, city of New Ulm has been programmed to receive S T P, small urban grant funds in the amount of just over two million dollars in federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four to help fund the reconstruction of this project. It's twentieth South Street from Minnesota Highway fifteen sixty-eight to the Minnesota River Bridge. Due to the lengthy process to go through the federal project memorandum and requirements with the federal funds, it is recommended that we send out an R F P to select a qualified engineering firm to assist us going through this federal D C P process. The selection committee would bring back a recommendation to city council with a funding amount at a future meeting.
I'll offer motion to authorize the request for proposal to deliver the two thousand and twenty-four twentieth South Street Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project. Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five point four, Moody's Investor Service Bond Rating. We do have John here, is that right?
Yes, Councilors, John Burmeister from P F M will be presenting via Zoom. He was not able to be here in person today, so he'll be presenting on this Moody's report and then also on the bond sale that was conducted this morning.
Very good. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you for, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. As indicated, Moody's did come back with a credit opinion, reconfirming your double A two rating. A couple items that are to note, they did note your growing tax base, which is always a good thing, and then one of your credit strengths is the healthy financial profile with strong liquidity and reserves. And then the one other sentence I think that really speaks volumes to the strong rating that the city has, they make a statement in here on the second page, kind of on the bottom of the paragraph, which jumped out at me at least, and it says, "The city has established a track record of running balanced-to-surplus operations and periodically uses reserves for capital projects." So that just speaks volumes to Moody's opinion that the city of New Ulm has run very well. It's you have complete control of your budget, you're setting strong budgets, controlling the budget with your, you know, balanced budgets on an annual basis, and all of your metrics are glowing. You recall that triple A is the best rating you can get, and you've got a double A two here. And then the one thing you also kind of jumps out at you on the very last page, page five, is you can see, and I've mentioned this several times over the years, that for a community your size, you have a very strong rating. In fact, the size of your community dictated by the market value of the community only speaks to that you should be an A-rated community, but all of the other strong factors, including your budget management process, that's what's really carrying the day, which they're noting is a triple A on those scores. So with that, I'll open up any questions that you might have, and congratulations again on the confirmation of your double A two rating.
So John, double A two, what's the next step up? Is it the triple?
That would be a double A one, and then after that would be a triple A. So you have a double A, or excuse me, a triple A, and then a double A one, two, and three. So the next step up would be a double A one.
So like you said, we've been doing really, really well, but we've always been at the same spot. What do we need to do to get to the next step?
Yeah, it's interesting that you mention that, because everything within your control, which is the, basically the finances aspect of it, is very strong. Again, you're triple A in those categories. A couple things that are holding you back, the one thing that's holding you back is just the size of the community. You're up against other double A two rated communities, you know, that are very large, some like sixteen billion dollars worth of valuation, fourteen billion dollars of valuation, and the city has a billion dollars. So they're kind of putting you in that box that for the size of the community, I think in my mind, you've probably gotten the strongest rating you can get unless you can grow the, can grow the community, what, tenfold, which is going to be real difficult to do. So I think you've pretty much maximized the rating that you can receive, given the size of the community that you are.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
Yep.
That's all I got. Nothing.
Nothing. It looks good.
I'll offer a motion then to receive notification that Moody's Investor Services has assigned a rating to the city of New Ulm, general obligation, permanent improvement revolving fund bond series two thousand and twenty-one B and general obligation, public utility revenue refunding bonds two thousand and twenty-one C.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And thank you, Nicole, and everyone for helping to keep us there. I mean, eleven years we've had this rating, so.
Yeah.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five point five, sale of series two thousand and twenty-one B and two thousand and twenty-one C bonds.
Very good. I assume Nicole handed out for you the results of sale. As indicated, there's two series, one's the two thousand and twenty-one B, and that's the city's, what I'll call, annual improvement revolving fund bonds that you sell every year. And then also included in that, there's a small refunding component of it as well. And as you can see on the results of sale, I'm pleased to tell you that we ended up getting nine bidders. If you have it there in front of you, you can see it's one, two, three, four pages thick, and F H N Financial Markets came in at a true interest rate of a point seven one one three percent, and then the cover of what Northland Securities, who won it, by the way, last year, was point seven two percent. And then if you kind of flip through that, you can see Robert W. Baird out of Milwaukee, U M B out of Kansas City, B Y N Mellon out of Pittsburgh, Piper out of Minneapolis, Baker Group all the way out of Oklahoma, and then a couple more players out of Dallas, Texas. You can see that the high bid was a point eight three four nine percent. So I'm pretty pleased with these, all the interest rates are higher than what you got last year. I was looking at they're like thirteen basis points higher than what you received last year, but still you're borrowing at a rate well below one percent over a ten-year term. And then finally, but not least, this did refund, every year Nicole and I look through for the city any refunding opportunities. We look for ways to save the money, the city money on interest expense, and we decided to throw in the two thousand and fifteen A bonds. They're callable anytime, so Nicole will be providing a D T C prior to your approval. Nicole will provide D T C notice that will pay those off within thirty days. That would be September seventeenth, and we can, and then take some of the proceeds that we have with this bond issue, plus some cash on hand for the twelve one, two thousand thirty, twenty-one bond maturity, we'll pay those off. And pleased to tell you, there's another sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, eight hundred and one dollars of savings. And on an annual basis, there's seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars that'll be saved in this calendar year, twenty-one, and then thereafter, you'll save thirteen thousand to seventeen thousand dollars in twenty-two through twenty-five. So the refunding isn't very long, but it has a pretty good impact on an annual basis. So there's good savings there on this. So I'll open up to any questions after I get done with the C series, but we'd recommend that you award this to F H N. And then you'll notice also that we did revise the par amount down to three million, one forty. The bonds were sold at a premium, so you receive more proceeds in the par amount of the bonds, because the interest rates, again, were higher than the yields. And so we were able to drop that down to three million, one forty versus the three million, three fifteen that we went out to sell the bonds with. And maybe I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions on the B series before I go into the C series. Okay, hearing none. You also have a sales result for the two thousand and twenty-one C. This is another opportunity that we worked with the P U C and Nicole and Chris down there at the P U C. This was the refunding of their two thousand and thirteen C bonds. These bonds are callable on twelve one of two thousand and twenty-one, and so it worked out really well to tie this bond issue in, combined with your B series, at the same time, as this to kind of get into the market. And I'm pleased to tell you that we ended up getting eight bidders. You can see B Y N Mellon Capital won this one at a point five nine five zero, and you can see this bond issue only goes out to two thousand and twenty-eight, so it's a little shorter than the city's other series, so that's why the true interest rate is a little bit lower. And then Robert W. Baird came in at the cover at a point six three eight, and then if you kind of flip through this, there's several others. Some of the same players that bid on your other bonds as well are in there as well. And we were able to receive a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and five dollars of savings. And again, this is only out to two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-eight, so the savings on an annual basis is thirteen thousand, three hundred to sixteen thousand, two oh five, two oh five. So that's about, that's an annual debt service reduction on an annual basis. So I'm pretty pleased with that. We set this up, or we kind of identified this back in April of this year. Interest rates have been kind of hovering around. They actually went down, and they've come up a little bit recently. And I'm pleased to inform you that the interest rates kind of stayed similar to where they were back in April, actually a little bit better, even though the inflation numbers are starting to get people's attention. So I'm glad that interest rates stayed where they were, and we're actually able to exceed the savings that we had targeted back in April. So we would recommend, P F M would recommend that we award this to B Y N Mellon Capital Markets, and you'll also note that we did decrease the size of this bond issue from one million, five twenty, down to one million, three twenty, after we received the bid. the bids. And so with that, I'll open up to any other additional questions you might have.
To reduce the amount of debt that you have to repay, but then you still get that premium of cash to use for what you need.
Being we don't have any questions, I'll muggle through this. Offer the resolution,
waive the reading, authorize the issuance, awarding a sale and fixing the form and details for $3,140,000, correct?
Oh, I would have to change those amounts, I bet, from when I wrote this originally.
He gave us different numbers.
Yep.
Right. General Obligation, Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund and Refunding Bonds Series 2021 B and $1,320,000.
$1,320,000. General Obligation, Public Utility Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2021 C, and authorize the mayor and the finance director to execute the bond documents on behalf of the City of New Ulm to finance various municipal street and alley improvements, refunding 2015 Permanent Improvement Bonds, and refund 2013 Public Utility Revenue Bonds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number 5.6, donation to the fire department.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to the set the $250 donation from Christiansen Farms.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.7, bench donation, German Park.
I'll make an offer, or make a motion to offer a resolution, waive the reading, accepting a donated bench in memory of Lindsay Overbay and its placement in the German Park Flower Garden as depicted.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.8, attendance at the 2021 ICMA Conference in Portland, Oregon.
I'll offer motion to approve attendance at the 2021 International City Manager Association Conference in Portland, Oregon, October 3rd through the 6th, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
The only discussion point is this item and the next item, we've never had these on the agenda ever, so I'm wondering why we do now? Just a new transparency or-
It states that we have to, it states that we have to for out-of-state travel, and so this will be the start, but starting next year on, in January, we'll actually have this out in January for the year.
For the whole year?
For the whole year, yes.
I have been seeing these at other-
Not a big deal to me, but I was just curious.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 5.9, attendance at the 2021 NLC Conference in Salt Lake City, Utah.
I'll make motion and approve attendance at the annual 2021 National League of Cities Conference in Salt Lake City, Utah, from November 18th to the 20th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I just need to be sure to put this on my calendar in advance for next year so that I can go, because I'm really bummed that I can't go with you guys. I hear it's a great time, so. All right, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With no additional business, this meeting is adjourned.